Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every reason and justice
in all. Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Abadana. Counselor Rodriguez. Counselor Lopez.
Yeah.
Counselor Brown. Counselor Pearl Otunda. Counselor Tejada.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Counselor Bishop.
Present.
Counselor Ray Coopero. Nine members present, the other four, Madam Chairman.
Public hearing on Capitol.
Public hearing.
This is a public hearing for the public. Yep. Counselor Bishop, sorry.
It appears as though we have a large crowd here this evening for one issue in particular. And as is customary when we have that and have such a large crowd, I would like to move that we suspend the rules and take that issue up, which is the City Manager's letter on the.
To negotiate group health plan. So you're asking to bring 70 up.
And the order also.
And the order attached to it. Any objections? Louis, let me switch.
All right, Counselor. The amendment is before us. What would you like to do?
Wait a minute, I got the orders before us. What would you like?
Read the letter from the City Manager.
Yeah, let me get these. OPEB, the first one, the first communication, OPEB.
This is the City Manager's letter regarding the group insurance negotiation.
Seventy. Statutory vote to negotiate group health plan design changes. Dear Counselors, I am writing to request that the City Council grant me the statutory authority to negotiate plan design changes to the city's group health insurance policies. This authority is imperative in order for the city to control group health insurance costs. As you may know, the city current group health insurance program is governed by an agreement with the Public Employee Committee, PEC, created pursuant to the statutory authority of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32b, Section 19. The covenant agreement with the PEC is a three-year deal that expires on June 30th, 2019. During the months of November through March, I did attempt to negotiate with the PEC a new multi-year agreement that would provide some cost savings to the group health program. Unfortunately, I have not been able to reach agreement with the unions. More regrettably, under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32b, Section 19, in the absence of a new agreement, the old PEC agreement remains in effect indefinitely. This means that without some City Council action to extricate the city from the rules of Section 19, it cannot effectuate any health care cost savings. Thankfully, the legislature has provided an opportunity for the city to solve this dilemma, but it does require City Council action. Specifically, new legislation adopted in 2011, Section 21 to 23 of the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32b, allow municipalities to implement cost savings plan design changes on its own if no agreement can be reached with the PEC, provided that the city agrees to share a percentage of the first year's savings, up to 25% with the unions. Again, however, the city can only proceed under Section 21-23 to adopt these cost savings if the City Council by majority vote agrees to allow the city to proceed in this fashion. If you grant this authority, I will negotiate reasonably designed changes to the city's group health policies, likely by imposing deductibles in line with deductibles paid for health insurance by state employees. Keep in mind that although the statute allows the city to unilaterally implement plan design changes, the statute is clear that no changes can be imposed by a municipality that exceed the plan design elements in place for the most popular health insurance policies available to state employees. So the city of Chelsea will always have health insurance at least as good as the provided to the Massachusetts public employees. In the absence of this vote to grant me statutory authority under Sections 21-23, I will be unable to effectuate any changes to the city current group health insurance, nor will I have the ability to achieve long-term monetary relief on health insurance costs. For these reasons, I respectfully ask that the City Council grant me the authority to proceed under Section 21-23, the proposed order is attached. Okay, Counselor Bishop.
I need to accept and file a communication from the City Manager, and I move to suspend the rules to allow the order that accompanies that to be read.
Twelve B. Yep. Order introduced by Counselor Vido, order that the city of Chelsea hereby elects to engage in the process to change health insurance benefits under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 32b, Section 21-23.
I move to adopt our rule covenant. I'd like to speak on it.
All right, you can speak on it.
So I know that this is a hot topic, and I just have to say, my husband works for DPW, and I've never shared this publicly, but I too have health insurance, health issues that would, this change would create more burdens and more troubles for me personally. So it's, I don't come to making this decision easy. We hired the City Manager to negotiate with the unions, and I don't feel comfortable with him not having all the tools in his arsenal when dealing, when trying to renegotiate these health insurance contracts. I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty. I don't, I don't, we don't have the power to negotiate with the union, so I'm trying to stay out of that as much as possible. What I do want is to give my City Manager the tools that he needs to go back with the PEC, and hopefully, as the state law requires, there's 30 days where you can renegotiate. And what I'm hoping is that everyone could come to a common ground. At the end of the day, while I understand the concerns, and I've heard you all loud and clear, at the end of the day, we have a responsibility as City Councilors to look out for the long-term future of this city. And while insurance has not gone up in recent years for folks, I mean, it just, those are the types of things that we just have to kind of expect are going to go up, kind of like water rates and property taxes, and as much as we don't like it, it's just, it's just kind of the nature of the game. So I am going to be supporting the City Manager and giving him the power that he needs. And I know that I'm going to make a lot of people upset, but I've done my homework. I've done all my homework. I've met with Mr. Capistrano. I've met with the City Manager. I've read this law, fell asleep three times reading it. I wanted to understand it so that I can make an informed decision. And again, I, I'm really hoping that once we give the City Manager this power, he could go back to the unions and they can come up with something that will work for everybody. I mean, we all live here. We work here. We play here, and I'm hoping that we can all come to a common ground. At the end of the day, I have to show my face to the taxpayers and know that we're doing the best that we can in terms of fiscal responsibility for this community. So I want to make sure that before I sit down, there isn't anything that I'm, that I'm missing. I know there was a lot of miscommunication out there in terms of retirees not being able to, that there were going to be drastic changes. That's only affecting a very small group of retirees who don't qualify for Medicare. I just feel like there was a lot of misinformation going, going on over there, and we received a letter from a woman named Barbara Flood, and her letter is actually in the agenda, but I've already spoken with her, and she's all set. There's, there's a lot of information that's out there that people just don't, weren't, don't have access to. And so I feel confident that I did my due diligence. I'm willing to engage in any conversations with anybody that has, that wants to know specifically why I voted the way I did. I feel confident that I've done my homework and that I'm making a decision based on what I think is best for this community as far as being a City Council President and representing this community at large, and supporting the City Manager that I, along with my council colleagues, helped elect so he can negotiate with the union. So I'm sorry if that's not what everybody wanted to hear, but that is where I am, and I am supporting the City Manager.
Anybody else like to speak?
Okay, so, Counselor Bishop.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes.
I just want to echo what the chairperson had to say. This is a case, I think, of unions or labor on one side and management, City Council on the other. I'm sure when the unions hired their negotiator to sit down with our negotiator, the City Manager, that they gave that negotiator all the tools that he needed to negotiate. City Manager has requested that we give him the tools that he needs to negotiate. What we do tonight is vote to allow him to have the tools that he needs to carry on the negotiation. I too am a retiree of the city of Chelsea, and I am affected by what happens with retiree healthcare. Lucky for me, I guess, or lucky for the city, because they save a ton of money. I'm eligible for Medicare, Medicare. And I'm on Medicare, and my wife's on Medicare. So we are basically not really affected by this. Neither are any other retirees that are on Medicaid. Not affected at all. So I just wanted to make that clear, because I got the letter and I got some phone calls, some folks who were a bit upset, saying, oh, my insurance is going to drastically change. And I said, no, it's not if you're on Medicare, Medicaid. And that's all, basically, that's what this is to me. Is the City Manager going to have the tools he needs to negotiate with the unnegotiator? And I think it would be grossly unfair of us to say to the City Manager, no, you tie one hand behind your back and negotiate with what you got. So I'm going to go along also, as the Chairman stated, with the request. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Explainable.
All right, so at this point, we're going to call the roll call.
If you vote yes, if you vote yes, you're. Give them the gall. If you vote yes.
You've had an order. You've had a meeting.
If you vote yes.
We've had a meeting.
Right. If you vote yes, you're approving the order allowing the City Manager to have the negotiation rights. If you vote no, you're denying it. Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Vido.
Yes.
Counselor Abadana.
No.
Counselor Rodriguez.
No.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Pearl Otunda.
Yes.
Counselor Tejada.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Bishop.
Yes.
Counselor Ray Coopero. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, in favor, two opposed, one absent. The motion is adopted. Call of recess while the chamber clears.
Okay, hold on. I understand people are upset. There's an opportunity to speak. There's an opportunity to speak. All right, this is a public hearing for the capital improvement plan. Anybody that wants to come up and speak on, in regards to the capital improvement plan, come up to the podium. You have four minutes to speak. Go once.
Very briefly, Madam President, I just want to speak in support of the capital improvement plan. I will not go into detail. We spoke about this at length and in detail in subcommittee. I would just reiterate, this is a very robust capital improvement plan. It contains 45 projects and an investment of over $18 million being proposed. It runs the gamut from parks and public building, roadway and sidewalk work, water and sewer utility work. It's a continuation of our commitment to invest the good amount of reserves that we have in projects that improve the lives of residents. And so I ask the City Council to approve the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrosino. Anybody else wish to speak on the capital improvement plan? Go once, go twice, that portion of the meeting is closed.
We have a public hearing scheduled on the proposed provision on zoning amendments to properly regulate improvements to business districts, including but not limited to outdoor cafes, signage, and facade improvements.
Anybody that wishes to come up and speak, this is a public hearing for the zoning amendments for signage and facade. Please state your name and address for the record. You have four minutes.
So my name is Victor Rodriguez, and I represent Liberty Loan Company and Broadway Jewelers, business that has been in Chelsea since 1947. The owner, Sergio, nephew, Jaromillo, was not able to attend today. They have asked that myself and a colleague of mine to represent our business in which we manage and work. The idea of updating the signs and lighting ordinance, as well as creating new outdoor cafe and dining areas ordinance, is a major step forward in our opinion. We believe this will become our community fabric and create a strong sense of vitality and prosperity. For this reason alone, we should embrace them and launch ourselves into a stronger and better community. The past has been difficult, but understand full well in the intent create, creating a sense of community in the downtown area will go a long way towards attracting investment and commerce. We strongly support and encourage City Council to view this as a very important step at elevating our city and creating a more interesting and inviting city for our res, and inviting city for our residents and those living in surrounding communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on the public hearing for signage and facade improvements? Please state your name and address for the record. You have four minutes.
I'm Mimi Graney. I'm the downtown coordinator. I work out of the planning department. And the current proposal before you is the result of five years of work predating my work here for the city of Chelsea. It started back in 2014 with the Broadway Corridor Action Plan, which was a plan developed by the city of Chelsea with the neighborhood developers with about 250 people participating. And that plan recommended that the city look at activating the streets and doing a facade improvement program. And back in 2016, the City Council put forward and developed their downtown initiative with three components. A key one of those was facade improvements for the downtown. And then after I started in 2017, we started the process, engaged gamble associates for us to look at design guidelines for the downtown. And then last summer, we worked with 16 individual businesses and looked at those best practices for signage programs and looked at how those might be implemented, how would they connect with the needs and interests of the downtown businesses. And we were able to identify some of the gaps in the current ordinance with what some of the businesses wanted to see here, and detailed the different ways to facilitate that. Then based on our findings of working up those designs, we drafted these ordinances and have been working with a number of different groups in the neighborhoods to sort of revise those as we went along, including the TDI program that's based in Bellingham, or Bellingham Square, and then other businesses throughout the district. And we expanded it over time to look at the interest in doing outdoor dining as another way of sort of leveraging some of the downtown events that are happening here. So I hope that you can look favorably on this proposal. I feel like our interests were really about how to facilitate the interests of the downtown businesses to address some of the ongoing concerns that neighbors have around beautification. We, there's a program, folks probably know the Downtown Task Force, that we've been looking at addressing safety concerns in the downtown, not just actual crime, but people's perception of safety, and have been doing intensive work with both business owners and residents and visitors to the district. And the number one reason why folks said that they didn't feel safe in the downtown was look and feel and cleanliness.
One more minute.
And then addressing those, the, the public part of it, the city's been investing a lot in terms of cleaning up the streets and our work on reimagining Broadway to re-improve the streetscapes. The facade program is helping to facilitate the businesses to address those concerns. So thank you for your consideration. There's two letters that were submitted. I'm not sure if they got to the City Council in time, one from Axe Urban and another one from the neighborhood developers who weren't able to attend tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Graney. Anybody else for the public hearing?
My name is Rich Cuthy. I'm the Executive Director of the Chelsea Chamber of Commerce at 308 Broadway. I want to say that regarding the signage ordinance and the outdoor dining, you know, conceptually, these thing, these are two things that are a long time coming, especially the, the signage. I think a few people in this room know that I've been ranting on about that for several years, sending the City Manager pictures of blade signs in Newburyport and saying, look how nice these are. Our downtown could look like this as well. Specific to the ordinances are a couple of places where I feel like definitions weren't very clear, and it can be a little confusing. You know, we've seen businesses deal with confusion around ordinances in the past, and it's kind of demoralizing for them. But I, you know, really, really applaud what the, what they're trying to do here in terms of bringing signage and the outdoor dining. So except for some definitions here and there, the chamber's very much in support of these actions.
Thank you, Mr. Cuthy. This is a public hearing on the signage and facade improvement program. Please state your name and address for the record.
Maureen Colley, 150 Captain's Row. I'm in support of this idea. I have attended some of the meetings and read everything and watched it on TV and so forth. I like it. I think it's generally good. I do have one concern, which has to do with sandwich boards. Although I have an emotional and a historical connection with sandwich boards, having been paid 25 cents an hour back in the day in New York to walk around with a sandwich board from Mario's Pizzeria. And I do like them. I do like them, but we have, you know, we're challenged here because we have roads that were built for horses and carriages, and we're trying to cram everything in. But as a disabled person, I have to say, it's too much, and it will be very dangerous, particularly for those of us that lack sight. And for those of us that cannot walk on a regular basis right, my big scooter, I'm, I'm going to whack it, not deliberately, but because it's going to be too crowded. So I would encourage you to amend that if you haven't done so already. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colley. Anybody else? Mr. Mahoney, and then Mr. Ambrosino.
I'm Joe Mahoney, 200 Captain's Row, Chelsea, Mass. I'm also the President of the Chelsea Chamber, but I think our Executive Director has spoken well with regards to the chamber. I, as a resident, though, and just listening to the Madam President there, her concern is for the people of the city. Mine is the same. And the idea of having clearer signs, signs that are in the current rather than being up 30 years ago, I think would be beneficial. And so therefore, I am in support of this. I tend to be brief in my conversations and not bore you, but I just want to be aware that I am in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Ms. Ambrosino.
Thank you, Madam President. Just very briefly, I do want to say that this, the sign ordinance in particular is really important for us to move forward in our efforts to improve the aesthetic look of the downtown corridor. The Council approved, you folks approved, a facade, a fund, a program and funded it two years ago. We've been stymied in our ability to implement it because doing anything that we wish to do, that you wish to do, is, tends to be contrary to our existing and outdated sign ordinance. Now, you can do facade improvements under our existing ordinance, but it requires you to get zoning relief. That's time-consuming and that's inefficient. So with these proposed changes, we will be able to move forward and implement the facade improvement program that we've all been waiting for. Now, I will say this. I know that there are still some tweaks to this ordinance. One was mentioned tonight about the sandwich boards. There is, you are under no time constraints at the moment. I would, I would urge you to send it to committee, because I do believe that within the next few weeks, and certainly before the Council leaves for summer break, we can probably resolve whatever remaining disagreements exist and get an ordinance that we can all feel comfortable supporting. So I'm happy to work with you in doing that. I think we can do that and get this done before we break for summer.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrosino. This is a public hearing on the signage and facade improvements. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hi, everyone. My name is Eduardo Chacon, 93 Quarters Street. Just real quick, I really don't know the details of what is being or is trying to be passed here, but I grew up here. I moved to Chelsea in 1992, and me walking the streets was basically going from my house to the Williams or to Chelsea High and coming back. There was no activities in the streets. It was not opening or welcoming. And I've seen the city change, and it's, it's, it's going up, and it's, it's becoming a place that people want to be out. And I have had the opportunity to work with Mimi Graney during the Pupusa Fiesta, that we, we were able to get 750 people out to get it, make a block, a line around the block, because they want this. This is what people want. And, and to be honest with you, I've, I've had the experience to live in other cities, big cities, and those signs make a difference. On top of that, it's going to educate our business owners of what they can do inside their business once they start seeing, you know, these, these type of signage up. We have the Chelsea Night Market that is coming up soon, and that also is going to affect of how all these businesses are looked at. You know, we obviously have a lot of new residents and, and. You know, we obviously have a lot of new residents, and in order for them to come out and feel welcomed, feel part of the community, these are the type of developments that definitely the city of Chelsea needs. So I urge you all to please, please consider approving this, we would really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody else for the signage and facade improvement? Going once, going twice? That portion of the meeting is closed. Next is a public hearing on the proposed provision on zoning amendments regarding short-term rentals. Anybody wish to speak on the short-term rentals? This is a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments for short-term rentals.
Again, Madam President, very briefly, we've been talking about doing some regulations in this realm of short-term rentals for a while. We were waiting for the state to act. The state finally did act and will implement some regulations and some potential taxes come July 1. This is a proposal to take advantage of those regulations and for us to regulate ourselves in this area. What's proposed, it's a very minor change in the zoning ordinance, it just opens up a few districts to allow for this use. The more critical one is the accompanying ordinance that defines what kind of short-term rentals we will allow. And what's being proposed is a modest proposal to allow this in the city, but only in owner-occupied one, two, and three-family homes. And so that's what's before you, that's what's before the council. Specifically, what's before you tonight is the zoning ordinance that would create the use and allow it to occur in certain districts, whichever districts the council desires. We've proposed certain districts, but really will rely upon the council as to where they wish this to occur. The more critical regulatory piece is the accompanying general ordinance, and that talks about limiting the rentals to those individuals who own and occupy a condo or a one, two, and three-family home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ambrosino. This is a public hearing for the proposed zoning amendments for short-term rentals. Anybody else wish to speak? Going once, going twice? Portion of the meeting is closed. Finally, we have a public hearing on the proposed provision on zoning amendments related to inclusionary housing. Anybody wish to speak? Going once, going twice? Portion of the meeting is closed. Public speaking, anybody wish to speak? Mr. Puckel, please state your name and address for the record, you have four minutes.
My name is Roman Puckel, elevator 191 Linfield Street, PB, Mass. I'm a member of the Polish-American Veterans Post-13 of Chelsea. I'm a Vietnam-era veteran, and thanks to the ROTC program at Northeastern, I became a commissioned officer in the Signal Corps United States Army. But I'm here to remind everyone that we're having an eighth annual Memorial Day parade and ceremony on Memorial Day, May 27th, Monday. The parade starts at 8:15 a.m. at Welsh Funeral Home, Parkinlaud at 7:18 Broadway. The ceremony starts here at City Hall in the front lawn at Flomerton Broadway. I want to make everyone aware of it and invite everyone to attend these ceremonies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Puckel. Anybody else for public speaking? Public speaking, going once, going twice? That portion of the meeting is closed. Next order of business.
We have the approval of the minutes of April 22nd, 2019, City Council meeting.
Can I have a motion, councilors? Councilor Lopez moves to accept and file. A minute's under suspension. Yes, Councilor Vidal?
Make a motion to take, withdraw from the table, the order to appropriate Community Preservation Committee operating budget funds.
Do you have in front of you? Any objections on, nope, it's before us, what do you wish to do, the councilor?
Thank you, I make a motion to adopt on a roll call, and if I can.
Do you want to speak on it?
Thank you. Many of you can remember, a few weeks ago, the Councilor Calvin T. Brown had originally put forth an order on March 25th. This was an order that requires the City Council to vote to appropriate the monies that was collected as part of the CPA. We had tabled it in order to allow members of the council to ask any questions regarding those allocations. A real quick recap, the city collects those, the CPA, and then we have to distribute evenly into three different pots. We've collected monies in 2019, 2018, and 2017. We therefore need to now just allocate those funds into the respective three divisions. It's in front of you right now, and I ask that we adopt so that we can go forward and follow the guidelines as set by the state.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Councilor Bishop?
I am not a big fan of the Community Preservation Act, I must say. And my reasons for not being a fan are that this money that was collected over the last three years, is sitting in a pot in the city, has not been designated for one specific project for any year. Three years' worth of money that was supposed to have state funding match what the city collected. Where's the state funding? Oh, guess what? There isn't any. So all of this is City of Chelsea taxpayer money. As I said, not one project has been designated with this money. Not a single project in any one of the three categories that we have to put money into. There's also another category here, administrative expenses, forty thousand dollars. I don't think that's right. Where's the forty thousand dollars going? And why do we have to pay forty grand? Are we hiring a person? I'm told, no, oh, no, we're not, we're hiring a consultant maybe. I think it's a waste of taxpayers' money, and it was brought into the city and added to everyone's tax bill with the thought that they were going to be matching funds from the state, and those funds never came forward, to my knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Cooperow?
I'm not a big fan of the CPA either. The CPA, what it does is it takes my money, and then it wants to use it. Why doesn't it give back the money to the people that live here instead of taking the money? If the people knew what the CPA was all about, they would have never voted for us. The CPA takes your money and uses it, and instead of helping you, what it does, it doesn't help you, makes your taxes go higher, because it increases your tax. If your house goes, so was your CPA. The CPA grows with your tax. It doesn't decrease your tax, it increases your taxes. And what does it do? Who does it help? It hasn't helped anybody so far.
Any other councilors wish to speak?
Roll call.
Roll call.
A yes would be to adopt. Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vido?
Yes.
Councilor Avadina?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown, absent.
Councilor Polotanda?
Yes.
Councilor Tejada?
Yes.
Councilor Robertson?
Yes.
Councilor Bishop?
No.
Councilor Cooperow?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight in favor, two opposed, one absent. Motion adopted.
Can I have a read of this communication?
We have a communication received from the city manager regarding the OPEB trust agreement. Dear councilors, in June of 2011, the Chelsea City Council adopted MGL Chapter 32b, Section 20, for the purpose of establishing an other post-employment benefits, OPEB trust fund, to meet the current and future liabilities of the city for group health insurance benefits for retirees and their dependents. Since that time, the city has been setting aside funds in this trust to cover this liability. The amounts have been relatively small. This past year, the city set aside three hundred thousand dollars for this purpose, and I will recommend the same for fiscal year 20. At this point, the city has approximately two million dollars in this account. In 2016, the state legislator completely rewrote the law as part of the Municipal Modernization Act. The new statute is attached. Pursuant to that statute, municipalities that have these OPEB trust funds are now required to establish a declaration of trust or a trust agreement and designate a trustee for the fund. The trust agreement is then filed with the chief executive and the city clerk and takes effect ninety days later unless rejected by the city council. In order to bring the city's OPEB trust fund into compliance with the new version of the law, I am requesting two actions by the city council. First, I ask that the city council formally accept a new version of the law by majority vote, and second, I request that the city council accept the attached trust agreement for the OPEB trust fund. The trustee of this fund shall be the treasurer. The required orders are attached. Once the orders and trust fund agreement are approved by the city council and the new trust agreement takes effect, the city's existing OPEB funds will be subject to this new trust agreement. As you will see from the terms of the trust agreement, the trust is irrevocable, and all its funds must be paid to satisfy the OPEB owed to retired city employees and their dependency, Article 3.2. Based upon the most recent OPEB valuation by Odyssey Advisors, the city's current liability for this obligation is a hundred and eighty-six point four million dollars. Can I have a motion?
Move it to a subcommittee on conference.
I don't think that we have to pass this this evening. I have many questions, and I'm sure other members of the board have many questions also, and I think the conference is in order to find out what the answer is to walk away.
Thank you, councilor.
The next communication, revised vacant building ordinance. Dear councilors, in follow-up to the discussion at the April 17th, 2019 Subcommittee meeting, I am submitting to you a new vacant building ordinance. As you will see from the red line, the red line, the version attached, they have revised the proposed ordinance to incorporate three specific changes. A new fee schedule, which reduces the annual cost for residential buildings, such as the first-year cost is only one hundred dollars more than the current fee. A new provision, Section E4, which waives the fee and tolls the timeframes and circumstances where an owner-occupant is ill or is renovating the property due to fire or other natural disaster. And a new clause in Section G that provides discretion to the city solicitor to waive the fee in circumstances of extraordinary hardship or merit. I am hopeful that you will, I am hopeful that with these changes, the council will approve this important regulation.
Can I have a motion? Councilor Bishop?
Again, I hate to keep saying we need, I have questions, but we did have a conference on this, and we did bring these items up. However, I thought the city manager was going to include specifically something for people who entered nursing homes, and I don't see that here. It says just someone with illness, and then we leave it up to the city solicitor to determine what a hardship is. I would much prefer that if we're going to pass an ordinance on this, that we have something in it that directly helps those folks who are forced to go into a nursing home and own property in the city of Chelsea. And I think it's incumbent upon us, before we pass anything, to make sure that that is specifically in the ordinance. So I ask that this be sent to conference.
Just for the record, there is something coming up under unfinished business as well. There's an order attached.
Okay.
Independent audits. Dear councilors, attached will find copies of the following documents prepared by outside auditors. The comprehensive annual financial report for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2018, the GAO and the OMB reports, the Chelsea Retirement System Pension Schedule Report, the management letter, and the City of Chelsea Other Post-Employment Benefits OPEB Plan, GASB 75, actual evaluation. The first four documents were prepared by Clifton Larson Allen LLP. The OPEB valuation was prepared by Odyssey Advisors. The two firms are prepared to discuss their respective documents with the city council on mutually convenient dates.
I have a motion.
Think there's an audit coming up on the new business?
Actually, I don't think there is. There's not an order on the audit.
Move to conference.
We'll move it to subcommittee on conference, councilor.
Okay, let's see, we have the creation of the Chelsea Scholarship Committee. Dear councilors, I am writing to request that the city council create a new Chelsea Scholarship Committee pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law Chapter 66 and 3c, which was adopted by the city council last spring. By statute, the Chelsea Scholarship Committee is tasked with distributing financial aid in the form of scholarships to the Chelsea residents accepted to pursue education beyond the secondary school level. The funds available to the committee are those collected from taxpayers each year through a voluntary pledge form inserted in a quarterly tax bills. Approximately six thousand dollars has been collected. The committee has discretion in the distribution of the funds. However, the statute does require that in granting scholarships, the committee take into account a recipient's financial need, character, scholastic record, involvement in community work, and extracurricular school activities. The statute requires that the scholarship committee consists of the superintendent schools and at least four residents of the city, each of whom shall serve for a term of three years. Accordingly, pursuant to Section 4-2 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend, in addition to the required position for the superintendent schools, the following four residents. Mr. Juan Gallego, 29 Franklin Street, Ms. Anna Romero, 106 Orange Street, Ms. Lisa Lineweaver, 18 Franklin Street, and Ms. Grace Marina, 291 Wausenett. I respectfully request your approval of this committee and these appointments.
Can I have a motion for a second reading? Councilor Garcia, Councilor Garcia, move it to a second reading. I'm going to read the next one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Next order of business is the budget. We have a communication received from the city manager regarding the fiscal year 20 budget. Dear councilors, enclosed you will find my proposed fiscal year 2020 budget. The budget funds city expenditures at eighty-six million ninety-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, and school department expenditures at ninety-five million three hundred and ninety-one thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars for a total budget of one hundred and eighty-one million dollars four hundred and eighty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-five. This is approximately six point five million dollars more than fiscal year 19, a three point seven one percent increase. The fiscal year 20 budget continues support for many programs we have implemented over the past few years. I am proposing again full funding for our wraparound social services in the downtown, including the two full-time navigators, the support services for the navigators and the youth navigator program. This year's Health and Human Services budget also includes a new social services contract to support the ISD housing program. We have often found that our housing specialists identify individuals and families whose tenancies are at risk because they are in need of social services. We are hopeful this proposed contract will expedite support for those tenants, allowing them to sustain their existing housing. The FY20 budget does contain new positions in three departments, E911, DPW, and Elder Services, and an increase from a part-time to a full-time position in the licensing department. The E911 increase, a total of three new full-time positions, follows a comprehensive personnel review by the new director with the goal of ensuring adequate coverage for our growing call volume. The DPW increase has two components. The first is the personnel for the proposed new 311 system, which we hope will improve constituent services. The second piece is the new group of hires required for the water and sewer departments in the event the city council approves bringing these services in-house. As noted in a previous communication, the costs for these employees are onetime expenditures in FY20 only. Accordingly, they are proposed to be funded by an appropriation from retained water and sewer earnings and not from fiscal year 20 water and sewer revenues. The new part-time position proposed for elder services is to help with the desk. Previously, this work was performed by volunteers, but these individuals are no longer capable of keeping pace with the workload. And finally, the increase to a full-time staff position in licensing is due to the increased workload, particularly the significant increase in public hearings. There are also three departments where employees previously paid by non-appropriation funds are now on the payroll, library, recreation and cultural affairs, and planning. With respect to the former two departments, the changes due to the fact that revenues and the respective revolving accounts are no longer sufficient to cover the payroll costs of these employees. With respect to the planning department, the change reflected in the budgeted salary account is the continuation of a multi-year effort required by our outside auditors and discussed at some length last year to gradually move planning department salaries from the redevelopment account off-budget to the budgeted appropriation account. With this proposed budget, only four planning department employees will remain funded from the redevelopment account. The FY20 budget includes funds and salary reserves to cover the anticipated cost of ongoing union negotiations with our city hall employees, with the exception of the police and fire union contracts. All municipal union contracts expire on June 30th, 2019. Similar to past years, the FY20 budget relies upon a small amount of free cash. Similar to past years, the FY twenty budget relies upon a small amount of free cash. The modest request of $695,718 is manageable, given our strong reserves. I will be available to answer any questions that the city council has on the fiscal year twenty budget at its upcoming Subcommittee meetings. Can I have a motion?
Move to conference.
Acceptive, Councilor Garcia moved to a accept.
No, no, you've got to move it to conference.
Oh, she moves it to a Subcommittee on Conference.
Yeah.
Yeah, Councilor Garcia.
Judy Garcia.
Is that it for communications?
That's it. We have communications. We have a copy of a communication received from John DePree, Director of Planning and Development, regarding revisions of, to two sets of amendments, amendments to Section thirty-four dash one oh nine, signs and illuminations, and amendments to eight separate sections of the zoning ordinance. What's the pleasure of the body on the first communication?
Was it?
Pleasure of the body on the communication. What's the pleasure of the body on the communication?
Did you read it?
I read it.
Yeah, all right.
I moved to a second. Acceptive, file the communication. There'll be something coming up under unfinished business.
Sorry, that's all right.
Nice communication.
The next communication, we have a copy of a communication received from the Public Employee Committee for Chelsea Employees regarding a summary to consider during deliberations about whether to adopt Chapter thirty-two B, Section twenty-one thirty-five.
I moved to accept to file the communication. We already took it out of order and voted on the matter.
We have a copy of a communication received from Traffic and Parking Clerk Jeanette Centron White regarding the actions approved at the April second, twenty nineteen Traffic and Parking Commission meeting.
Can I get a motion? Counselor.
Counselor Cooper.
Counselor Cooper accepts and files the communication.
And we have a copy of a communication received from Ms. Barbara J. Flood regarding retirees' health insurance.
Yeah, motion to that?
I moved to accept the file of communication. That matter has already been resolved.
Unfinished business.
Unfinished business.
I'd ask that we move all items listed on the agenda for unfinished business removed from the conference to be able to be acted upon tonight.
Under suspension.
Under suspension.
There's no objection, it's a first order.
All right, it's the first order.
Okay, the first order introduced by Counselor Ray Cooperrow, Counselor Lopez, and Counselor Tejada, ordered that all street cleaning should be limited to the same amount of time on every street. There should be no exceptions.
Accept, accept them.
Make a motion.
On the suspension.
Okay. Counselor Cooper accepts, file, and the suspension. What do you want to roll call?
Roll call.
Boy wants to roll call. Okay, we're going to roll call, vote that.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? Counselor Javier Nella? All right, Counselor Cooper. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Javier Nella.
I understand the intent from the originator, and I guess now additional signees here. My concern here is that I believe that we are overstepping our bounds of infringing on the operations, which is out of scope for the city council. And the sentence that there should be no exemptions does not take into account the obvious, there are times when there are holidays, and those days are then skipped and so forth. I think that something should be, something that would work better is if the councils who have concerns of the times that street sweeping does occur should just have a conversation with the DBW director and work something out rather than try to have this blanket type of order. We've had similar orders in the past like this, and they've been rescinded for these very reasons. So again, I don't want to support even by, under suspension, something that may hinder the operations of the Department of Public Works.
What my colleague says, but it's kind of unfortunate if you live on the same street and your next-door neighbor only has two hours and the guy down the street's got five hours. So that's how I brought this forward, because people on my street, or the street next to me, or all the streets that are next to a certain place, up down the bottom of the street is from eight AM to one PM. Up at the top of the street is from three to five. So why should the guy down the bottom of the street, from three to eight to one, stay for five hours while the ones up the street only two hours? So there must be a way, even though what we vote, it does not matter because it goes to the Parking and Traffic Commission. They're the ones that decide what to do. We really can't say what we want to do. This is just telling, why can't you figure out a way to make it more acceptable to everybody? Why should you punish the residents? They live at the bottom from eight to one, and the ones that live on top from three to five. So there's a big disparity of going up and down. You know, they can figure out a way to make it more even for all of us. That's the whole thing that I'm trying to make, is equal and even for most of us. We're all residents of this city. Why should some residents get punished and some shouldn't get punished? It doesn't work that way. We're all residents. You shouldn't favor one over the other. I can understand this, on holidays, they don't come, they don't care, they don't come and tell you, there's no street sweeping on holidays. There's only street sweeping so many days during the month, twice a month. That's all they doing. So in those two days, you're telling me the Parking and Traffic Commission can't figure out a way for, at least make it even for the people. Don't make it so bad where one guy has to wait five hours and there's no way to park our cars. We're going to park our cars for five hours. You tell me where these people are going to jam their cars for five hours. That's the whole point. I'm trying to make it where it's fair and even for all of us. You can't just say to this guy, okay, you're going to move your car for five hours while this guy next door to you is going to have to stay two hours. Where is the fear there? It should be fear for all. Where are you going to stick all these cars for five hours? Why should they be for two and the rest for five? Isn't it more reasonable for all of us to have it equal or close to equal? Not that it's fair and equal in this world, but it should be close enough. That's the whole point I'm trying to make, that it should be close enough. And even if we say the Parking and Traffic Commission is the one to decide, we do not decide.
Any other councils like to speak? Counselor Lopez?
Yeah, I agree with my colleague, Counselor Cooperrow. There's some places that are, when they sweep the street, people only have to move the car for two hours, and there are other places, there's five hours. So people, some people got to work, some people got to go to appointments, and for them to be worried about parking for five hours and they have to move the cars and be around and waiting until the machine or the sweeper goes by, things, we should be fair, like he said. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
This is all going to be a far to kind of follow, actually. We do have the school that's in that neighborhood, and that's how the parking times are broken up in the area, so that people who are coming to the school have an opportunity to park without getting tickets from the sweeper. So therefore, it's something that we need to be paying attention to, or something that we can't change. It'd be up to the Traffic Commission to, thanks.
Any other councils like to speak? Okay, at this point, I'll ask the clerk to call a roll call.
A yes would be to adopt, a no would be not to adopt. Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Vido?
Yes.
Counselor Avizaneda?
No.
Counselor Rodriguez?
No.
Counselor Lopez?
Yes.
Counselor Brown absent. Counselor Pearl Lutonda?
Yes.
Counselor Tejada?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
No.
Counselor Bishop?
Yes.
Counselor Ray Cooperrow?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven in favor, three opposed, and one absent. Motion.
All right. So at this point, regarding.
Okay, we have under unfinished business, financial orders, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and I, and I can read them individually, but someone has to move them to a second reading.
I'd like to get a motion to move to a second reading.
I move orders B to I to second.
Wait a second. You're moving one? I can't.
B to I, Bobby.
I object to them. I'd like to take them up individually.
You want to take them individually?
I'm moving them to a second reading.
Second reading.
I want to speak on them.
Okay.
No, you can still speak on them.
Any particular one you want to speak on?
There's two or three that I would like to speak on.
All right. Ordered that the Chelsea City Council authorized appropriation of funds in the amount of $545,000 from free cash to the FY twenty nineteen Police Department salaries account. Move to a second reading. Counselor Bishop?
Thank you. Just so that the folks at home know what's going on, this is a mistake that was made in figuring out the retroactive pay in the police department. When it happened in, when they passed the contract, neither Lawrence Lowell, I can't remember which, and it came back, oh, they owed $2 million. I said, how the hell could that happen? Well, I guess it can happen anywhere, and it's happened here. $545,000 error, which is unfortunately something we have to put the money up for. We have no choice in the matter, but I'm not happy about it. But that's life.
The second.
Counselor Javier Nella?
I ask clarification. It's been my understanding that whenever an order is sent to a second reading, that ends all debate. It's been that way since, as far as I know, and unless we all of a sudden did not, had a vote that I wasn't aware of to not follow Robert's rules, then any time a motion is sent to second reading, it ends all debate. That means it also ends all comments. It's been that way since the creation of Robert's rules. So I don't understand how we are now changing the rules. If someone wants to speak on it, it can be done on a motion to adopt or a motion to conference, but it can't be done on a motion to a second reading. I hope my colleagues would read the rules, and I would ask our city solicitor to even just, to clarify that, if I am correct or am I mistaken. I have a former president also here on the council, and he's nodding an agreement that tells me that's the case. So why are we changing it all of a sudden?
Point of order, point of information. I was of the opinion that the only thing, for transparency's sake, I think we have two readings. So what kind of transparency is if you're not allowed to say anything about it? And I always was of the belief that the only motion that could not be debated was a motion to lay on the table. Motion to lay on the table is no debate. It's either suspension of the rules or roll call, whichever, whatever the body wants. I have a perfect right to speak twice on something that's spending $2 million of the city's money for the sake of transparency.
Okay, at this point, we're going to follow?
And just one other point, Mr. Chairman. I don't think it should go to a second reading. So why am I not allowed to speak and vote on it? This one I do think, but the next one I don't.
I ask for clarification.
I ask one of them.
Cheryl, would you mind?
So initially, I thought Counselor Bishop, because he said he wanted to speak on the motion, the motion was to move it to a second reading, not to speak on the actual order itself. That's what I was under the impression of, so he is correct that you can speak on the motion. To debate the motion to go to second reading, this city council has always not debated. They've always said just automatically send it to second reading. From what I understand, which will be the third reading of all these documents, because Counselor Bishop actually objected to the first reading of every single one of them. So today is the first reading of all of these motions. Off the top of my head, can I verify that there's no debate under Robert's rules? I don't know that. I don't have that with me tonight, but I do know that this city council, it's been about fifteen years, have always not debated when it moves something from the first to the second reading. I just know the practice. I don't, off the top of my head, know the Robert's rules.
All right. Thank you very much. Chair understands. No further discussion.
The second order is ordered that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of funds in the amount of $225,000 from free cash to the Bunker Hill Community College Scholarship Program expense account.
Can I get a motion to move to a second reading?
Giovanni Cooper.
Giovanni Cooper moves to a second.
No, no, it's out of order. Out of order.
Okay, at this point, it's out of order.
I mean, because the name. They've gone to second readings, counsel. That's it. There's no roll calls.
Can be a roll call?
No. There's no roll calls. Move to second reading. It's moved to a second reading.
Of course, it can be a roll call.
At this point, by statute, we're moving to a second reading?
He's moving to a second reading under suspension. I'm objecting to suspension and moving roll call.
None under procedure.
I second the motion.
None under procedure?
Second reading.
Second reading. Carry on.
No, it's automatic on financial matters. It's in our rules. Has to be read twice. Period. No votes. It's a special rule. Ordered that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of funds.
Am I recognized on the motion?
No.
Why not?
He's out of order.
You're out of order.
Why am I out of order, Mr. Chairman?
Because it's a special rule.
I'm asking to speak on the $225,000 appropriation.
We're not speaking on the motions.
I think that we got an answer from our city solicitor.
And that answer was?
And I think that we're going to follow those rules, and if we need to discuss these procedures, we will do so at a private time in conference, if you'd like to create a Subcommittee on Conference to discuss these motions, so that we know exactly where we are.
I would just ask for a point of clarification from the city solicitor again. She just said that I was allowed to speak on the motion, on the order itself.
No, not on the order.
Readings under the city charter. It's not statute, it's the charter. So they automatically go, there's no vote to send them, it's an automatic, you have to have two readings.
That's right.
What about speaking on them?
No.
Debate the, on the vote, you have an opportunity to speak. I think it's, again, the history has been, when you move that appropriation to a second reading, what was presumed always in Chelsea is after the first reading, you went to Subcommittee, and then you had the second reading, so you were learning all the information you needed to do in the Subcommittee. What's been happening now is that you've been objecting to the first reading, then you have a first reading, and now you have a second reading. So it's kind of changed a little bit, but that's just the practice that the council has had pursuant to the charter and the rules of the city council.
The chairman asks to speak on the motion. For the sake of transparency, those people that are at home watching this.
I don't know if you can recognize their.
Okay.
I make a motion that everyone is handed a Robert's Rules book and that we review it, and then we come back and follow the rules. Can we move on?
The only motion in Robert's Rules that is not debatable is a motion to lay it to.
All right, let's move on here.
The next order.
Am I recognized?
You are not. At this point, you're out of order.
I was allowed to speak on this.
Not discussing. I don't believe you're allowed to discuss it. I think you just bring it up.
Why do we ask for opinion if we're not going to follow?
Well, actually, we are. We are. Okay. I just want to make. Gotcha.
You're not recognized right now, are you?
Hi. Counselor Bishop. Let's try and get this resolved and moved on. Please, carry on.
To move to a second reading is not debatable. So if the motion is to move to a second reading, which is automatic in the city charter, why is there, the question then proceeds, why is there debate? That's what I said, I was just mentioning, the practice has been that you automatically moved it to a second reading without debate. In all fairness to Counselor Bishop, sometimes a motion, a order is clarified. In all fairness to Counselor Bishop, sometimes a motion, a order is clarified. I don't believe it's necessarily debated in the past, but it has been clarified or read out loud.
Okay. The next order introduced.
Counselor Bishop?
To explain to the people at home this $225,000 spending. For the sake of transparency.
Madam President?
So I just, this is the first time this has come before us. Has this gone to a committee yet for, to be scheduled? It has? We've had a conference on it. Okay, I just have to say, I just went over our city council rules, and they supersede Robert's Rules of Order. I don't see anything on the council rules that says that we're not allowed to speak during a second reading. I think it's been the practice since I've been here that whenever financial orders came before us, that for the sake of transparency and for the view in public, that we announce what they are. I just really think we're getting, maybe this is something we need to work out in the future as to what the process will be moving forward, but I think in order for, just to get us back on track, and for the people that are watching at home and the people that are here, that we just allow Mr. Bishop to at least say what he has to say, and then we move on and we figure out what the proper process is for the future.
I concur.
I think the folks at home should know what we're doing with their money. And we have spent $125,000 on this item, or $150,000 on this particular item already this year. I voted against it, and I spoke against it at the time. Now, the city manager is asking for an additional $225,000 to be paid to Bunker Hill Community College for scholarships for students who have already graduated from the Chelsea Public Schools system. They're no longer in the Chelsea Public Schools, but we are paying free college tuition for them. Now, where do you get free college tuition? Let me ask the folks at home that are paying the bills. You don't get it anywhere. The federal government won't give you free college tuition. The state government won't give you free college tuition. Why isn't this in the school committee budget? It's illegal. It's against the law to spend school funds on something like this. But this board feels it's okay to put it into the City of Chelsea budget to pay for college tuition for students who are very deserving. And I said at the conference that we had on it, I'm not fighting the program. I think the program's wonderful. I'm fighting the funding source. The City of Chelsea shouldn't be footing this bill. This is $200, $375,000 in this fiscal year only that we are putting up for this issue. The question was asked of the city manager, what if they're not legal residents of the United States? What do we do then? Well, they're all required to.
One minute, sorry.
They're all required to apply for a Pell Grant as part of this program. And if they don't get a Pell Grant, if they're not U.S. citizens, they won't get a Pell Grant. So we'll just pay the whole thing. Forget about the Pell Grant, we just put up all the money then. So we had 31 students take part this year. Of the 31 students, 11 dropped out or moved or whatever. I don't know if we paid 31 college fees. I guess we did, because there was 31 students in it at the beginning. Now we're down to 20. So we've paid for this at least one semester of students. 11 of them were no longer there. I just don't think it's a good expenditure of city money. I think it's a good program. Don't get me wrong. It's a great program, but it should be funded privately, not with the taxpayers' money. As I said, it can't go in the school committee budget because it's illegal. It's against the law to spend school funds on this item.
Okay.
But this board feels free to spend the city's taxpayers' money without any problem. And I just want the folks at home to know how their money is being spent.
Okay, next order.
The next order, that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of funds in the amount of $50,000 from free cash to the Elder Affairs Contract Services Expense Account for the Senior Transportation Program.
Can I get a motion to move to a second reading? Counselor Vidal moves to a second reading. Next order.
Next order is that the Chelsea City Council authorize appropriation of funds in the amount of $410,328 from free cash to the O'Neill Playground Park 22 Fund Construction Account.
Motion to move to a second reading, Counselor Vidal.
The next order is that the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of $82,000 from free cash to the FY 2019 Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Equipment.
Move to a second reading.
Counselor Vidal moves to a second reading.
The next order is the Chelsea City Council authorize the appropriation of funds in the amount of $100,000 from free cash to the FY 2019 Planning and Development Contract Services Expenses.
Counselor Garcia moves to a second reading.
$100,000?
$100,000.
On the motion.
Planning and development. Oh, you'd like to speak on it?
Yes. Thank you.
Carry on.
This is another item. I think it's fine to spend the city's money on worthy things, but I don't think it's so fine to throw the money away. And in my opinion, that's what this is, throwing the money away. The city manager wants to put $100,000 of the city's money up to pay for the 2020 Federal Census. The 2020 Federal Census is paid entirely and run entirely by the federal government. City has nothing to do with it. In years that have gone by, the city has put up $0 for this, as every other city in town in the Commonwealth has, zero. And I'd be shocked if there are any other cities in the Commonwealth this year that are putting any of their own funds up to pay anything for the 2020 Census. Spending money is fine, you know, if it's an appropriate thing, taxpayers' money, by all means, there are things that we have to pay for. I understand that. This is not one of them. And this is, in my opinion, a total waste of money.
The next order is the $7,000 from free cash to the 2019 Solid Waste Public Works Programs Expense Account.
Counselor Vidal moves to a second reading.
The next one is the authorization of the appropriation of funds in the amount of $300,000 from free cash to the FY 2019 Capital Projects Account Group.
Counselor Vidal moves to a second reading. Yes. You'd like to speak on it?
I'll be brief. When I left the house, I said to my wife, I'm going to try to keep my mouth shut and not say anything. I haven't been too successful. I think to spend $300,000 for a study of the traffic down on Park Street is a little bit exorbitant, more than a little bit. I think it's way too much money. And to me, I'm not from that area. I'd like to hear something from the councils that are, and I know the traffic is a problem, but I just think, I just have the feeling that we're spending $300,000 to get people through the city, not for the people that are living here, but for those that are cutting through Chelsea to get them out of here quicker, help them get home faster from their commute. People coming from East Boston, it's considerable traffic, going down Everett Avenue and Broadway Revere every night of the week. I don't know where the hell these people are coming from or where they're going, but there's a lot of traffic there all day and all night. And it's people cutting through Chelsea. And for us to spend $300,000 of free cash to say, well, how are we going to make them get through quicker, to me is not smart.
The next item is the amended version of the zoning signs and illuminations.
Do we have a motion?
I would like to move this to a subcommittee on conference, and I'd like to speak on it.
Carry on.
So I actually wanted to lay it on the table because I didn't want it, I didn't want us to vote on it and it not get the votes that it needed and then delay us 90 days. I'm not looking to stop this. I just think it still needs more tweaks, as the city manager stated when he spoke earlier, and I want us an opportunity to go back to conference and hash out those tweaks so we can come back with a finished product that's complete. Move it to conference.
Move to conference, yeah.
Yes.
The next item is amendment on the original zoning, eight zoning amendments.
Counselor Vidal.
I move it to a subcommittee on conference as well, same deal.
Next item.
The outdoor cafe and dining ordinance.
Counselor Vidal.
I also move this to a subcommittee on conference. I think that I was critical of the program, and I didn't think it was as inclusive as it should have been in the beginning. I think it's a great thing. I think we should try to encourage more outdoor seating, but I think that we need to come up with a finished product that addresses the entire city and how that can affect someone in District 6 or District 4. I understand that we're focusing on the Broadway area, but it would be nice if we could come up with a finished product that encompasses the entire city.
Next order.
The next one is the zoning short-term rentals, the amended version.
Do we have a motion? Counselor Bishop?
I just back to conference also. It was in the Globe yesterday that parts of Boston's short-term rental ordinance has been held up and questioned about the constitutionality of it and whether or not it can be implemented. And I don't know if ours also has that in here. So I think it's best, rather than pass it and have a problem, that we be safe and send it to conference.
And let me see, okay.
Can we get the court ordinance?
M and, and. This is the ordinance introduced by Counselor Vidal with regards to revising Part II, Chapter 6 of the Chelsea Code of Ordinances to add a new section on short-term rentals.
Counselor Vidal.
You want to send that to?
Send it to conference.
Okay.
Next order.
The next order is an order introduced by Counselor Vidal with regards to acceptance of provisions of subsection B of Section 3D of Chapter 64G of the Massachusetts General Law and imposing upon an operator of a short-term rental. Okay, let's see. We have an ordinance introduced by Counselor Robinson with regards to amending Section 34-156, inclusionary housing of Chapter 34, Article 7 of the Revised Code of Ordinances.
I'd ask for a vote to adopt the inclusionary zoning, if there are no objections.
I object. I want to move it to a subcommittee on conference.
This one?
Can I speak on it?
No, you can speak on it. Actually, it's been in conference for a long time, then it came out of conference and got moved back to conference.
With all due respect, Mr. Robinson, I'm asking the chair if I can speak.
Yeah, well, you have a right to.
Carry on.
The reason I am in full support of inclusionary zoning, and I appreciate the effort that Mr. Rock Combs, my colleague, has put forth as far as making sure that we're having an equal balance. I just, I've been in conversation with the planning department. I know that there are, since we implemented the inclusionary zoning, there are some things, some language that we need to tighten up, and it doesn't make sense for me for us to continue to bring it back and forth. I think, again, I don't know why we continue to rush some of these ordinances. I just think a nice conversation where we can hash out some of these things are important. For example, if a condo development were to come into the city, how realistically, how can we create 30% affordability for someone to own a condo? There's no bank in the world that would fund that. As far as monitoring, we can come up with all the rules in the world, but if there's no way to adequately monitor this, it just, it doesn't make sense. How long does affordability last for? There's certain language that I think that we need, deed restrictions, that I think that we really need to go back and look at this inclusionary zoning and speak with the experts, the people in the planning department that are working with this directly every day, and find out what is some language that they would like to add to this so that this can be a nice fruitful ordinance that we all came up with. So while I appreciate your efforts, my colleagues' efforts, I think it's great, I just think that it requires more work.
Next order. Oh, Counselor Vidalina?
I appreciate going to conference. I actually was, shared the very same concerns, and honestly was going to be voting, if this was coming up to a vote, would be voting against it. If this was solely going to impact rentals, I would say maybe it stands a chance. We, I had a conversation with a large developer today, and many of you know him, he's Mark White from One North, and he was inviting me to the breakfast, but this subject matter came up, and he said, I hope you vote for it. I hope it passes, because then no one else would build it, and I'll be the only one, and I'll be, you know, and I'll be here, and I'll have the apartments, and, you know, it's a game, it's great for me, basically knocking out any potential competition of apartments in the area. What he's trying to say is basically we're passing something that would stop affordable housing from being built in Chelsea. Particularly, I'm concerned about homeownership. I think we, I share the opinion that I think this community has built way too many of rentals and no ownership opportunities, and you can't separate rental versus ownership with this ordinance. If I attempted to say this would only apply to rentals and not ownership, it would not pass, it'd be illegal, and I asked the city solicitor prior to, it would have been an amendment that I made, and it wouldn't have passed because you can't disseminate. So basically, it's all or nothing. And as Counselor Vidal said earlier, if you try to build, if you tell a developer that they have to build, 15% of the units in a condo project have to be at 30% in the mix, but starting, at least on the lowest scale, it wouldn't be feasible. And the dynamics of the financials of a condo project are much different than a rental, which is why I say, maybe you can get away with it in a rental, but you definitely cannot get it done on an ownership project. The financials are different, cost of construction upfront and paying for it is different, and I just feel that we didn't include those experts in the conversation when this was being discussed. I know there was a conference, I know another one was scheduled by Counselor Bishop, and yet it was pulled and we never had it, but I wouldn't be able to pass this. And I think as someone who advocates for affordable housing in Chelsea, passing this would basically eliminate affordable housing in Chelsea because financially it wouldn't be allowed. So I look forward to going to the conference and discussing this and fully vetting this.
Do we have any discussions? Next order.
Ordinance introduced by Counselor Vidal with regards to adding new section, Regulation of Vacant Buildings, Chapter 6 to the Chelsea Court of Ordinances.
Can I have a motion? The vacancy ordinance, the vacant building ordinance?
Yeah, that's yours.
But the order's before us. Can I have a motion on the order? I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, I didn't. No, do you have a motion, Counselor Vidalina?
Motion on vacant buildings.
I asked it to be available to media and markets because it didn't specifically say any about people that are going to nursing homes.
So you want this to go to conference?
Okay, so you want this order to go to subcommittee on conferences? Well, got it, okay. Typically, we accept and file the communications, and then we make the motions on the orders. Okay.
Okay, move to conference. Okay, new business.
God, we're still in your business.
Yeah.
Okay.
First order under new business, the Capital Improvement Program Loan Order. It has to go to the second reading.
Counselor Bishop?
I spent some time today going over.
Can I have a motion?
Move to second reading.
I spent some time today going over the capital improvement program and the funding sources, more than anything for the capital improvement program. And I have some suggestions. And I put in a request that's in there.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we already had a subcommittee on conference on it. You want to have another one?
I have an order in this evening asking for a subcommittee on conference to discuss free cash with the city manager.
Okay.
And I just feel as though, before going to the And I just feel as though, before going to the school department's stabilization fund, I think we ought to look and see where the free cash is and what we have free cash. And maybe we will not have to either borrow so much or take any money out of the stabilization fund. And I will speak on it when my order comes up, but I move it to conference.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Bishop.
Okay, next order under new business, vote, let me see. That the Chelsea City Council, the City of Chelsea accepted provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Section Thirty-Two B, Section Twenty, to establish other post-employment benefits liability trust fund to meet the current and future liabilities of the city for group health insurance.
Counsel Bishop moved to subcommittee on conference. He sent the communication to conference earlier.
Next order introduced by Counsel Vido, that pursuant to the Massachusetts General Law, Section Thirty-Two B, Section Twenty D, the Chelsea City Council accepts and approves the City of Chelsea Other Post-Employment Benefits, OPEB, Trust Agreement dated April twenty-four, twenty nineteen.
Counselor Bishop, you moved this order, accompanying order, to subcommittee on conference as well.
Which one is that?
It's related to the OPEB.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Order co-sponsored by Counsel Recupero, Counsel Avellaneda. Order that the city manager prepare a request for the city council to establish a Chelsea Homeowner Soundproofing Program Fund account that would receive fifty percent of all money from Massport as part of its mitigation payment to Chelsea.
Counsel Recupero.
All right, with suspension, there's no objection. Would you like to speak on it?
See no objections? You have the floor, Counselor.
The city gets six hundred thousand dollars a year from Massport, and it puts it aside and says, "We use it for whatever we want." I believe that half of that money should be used for the people of our city who live right on top of the airport and need the windows. It doesn't cost the taxpayer any money. What it does is Massport intends that money to be used for something like that, and the city does not use it for something like that. So I'm not asking for the whole amount, I'm only asking for half of the amount that the city should turn around and help these people. It's not costing the taxpayer no money, so I believe it's a fair and just thing to do.
Thank you. Counsel Avellaneda?
Thank you, and as a co-sponsor. I'm asked that this be passed under suspension. And the idea here that we allow the city manager at least to propose to the council a plan of using the money. We can then vote whether or not that plan is acceptable to the rest of the council and if those funds should be allocated. The basis of the six hundred thousand dollars is that, is an agreement dating back over twenty years that the city would adopt an airport overlay district over along Eastern Avenue. In exchange of allowing airport-related use, the city would receive that six hundred thousand dollars of payment in lieu of taxes. So basically, that section of the city, besides already having to deal with the plane noise, we, that area of the city also deals with the airport-related traffic, whether it be the cars, the rental cars, or the cargo airport, import areas. So we've been asking Massport to try to qualify the rest of this community, areas that are underneath the flight path, to fund the soundproofing program. They've basically told the city manager, "We give you money, however you want to use it, go ahead." So I think what this community should do, for all those homes that have to deal and are under the flight path of Logan Airport, that have not received the soundproofed windows, should be able to apply to a program that the city can set up that mimics exactly what Massport already has in the books. There is a program, there's a qualification process and so forth. It behooves us, I think, and it's fair to all the residents who suffer day in and day out for all that noise, that this city somehow receives, I call, blood money, air-blood money, and doesn't give it back to those who are impacted directly. At minimum, I think fifty percent is a great number to start with. And I, hopefully, that the city manager can come back to us. And then it's up to the district counselors and myself, who are, you know, want to help those constituents, to convince the rest of the colleagues, because I know there are those who are in districts that don't qualify and may say, "Well, that money shouldn't go there," but I don't think that's fair right now. And those residents who suffer from the noise should get some peace and quiet. We've already proven that there are consequential health impacts, real health impacts, from this airport noise, so we should do something for it. Thank you.
No more discussion?
No more discussion.
The next order introduced by Counsel Recupero, Counsel Avellaneda, order that the city manager have the Department of Planning and Development prepare for approval by the City Council of Chelsea, homeowner soundproofing program that would provide funding for installing and soundproofing of windows and doors, and a soundproofing room to homeowner-occupied homes impacted by Logan Airport traffic.
Counsel Avellaneda?
Done the suspension.
No more discussion?
Well, I already stated everything earlier.
Okay. Did you want to speak? Okay, go ahead.
By this, I don't know, like Counselor, the fellow Counselor said, "I don't know how many people will qualify," and like he says, "It's only going to affect the districts right now that the plane fly over." But eventually, I would like that anybody in the city that is affected by it will qualify for it. It shouldn't just be restricted to the ones. But now, I could see his point, what he's trying to say, get the ones that it affects the most. But, in all fairness, Massport gave the money for everybody. So eventually, everybody in the city that qualifies under this program should be entitled to it. You know, there's nothing, if, it affects probably everybody, but the most that it affects is certain sections. But eventually, if we have the money and we get it all the time, why not expand it? Go to other places that are not covered under it, let them do it too. So there's nothing wrong with wanting to help everybody in our city. We all suffer some way or another.
Order introduced by Counsel Bishop, order that the city manager be requested to instruct DPW to consider adding the following streets for repaving this year, Lambert Ave, Wesley Street, and Hooton Way.
Mr. Bishop?
Suspension.
Adopt unanimous against the suspension. There are no objections. See you none?
Order introduced by Counsel Bishop, order that the city manager be requested to instruct DPW to replace missing no-left-turn sign on Adams Street at Garfield Ave. Paint a right-turn only arrow on Adams Street and install a removable barrier on Garfield Ave to prevent left-turn at that location.
Counsel Bishop?
I move suspension, Madam President.
Yep.
And I move also that it be referred to the Traffic and Parking Commission for consideration of a one-way street, Adams Street, from the Revere Beach Parkway to Garfield Avenue.
Okay.
On the motion. We have a huge problem that has developed and has been developing for a while at that location. People coming off of Route One onto Route Sixteen, trying to take the left turn to turn around and go to Revere, are unable to get over in that lane because traffic is so far backed up at that light that they can't pull across two lanes of traffic and get into that lane. So what they're doing is going up just a little further, taking a right, and going up Adams Street and taking a left, which is illegal. The signs, there is one sign there, another sign had been knocked down, it was replaced this week at my request. And whether the signs are there or not, people are taking the illegal left. When, in the morning and during the day, when the traffic is really backed up at that light, they're just cutting people off. I mean, you should see the fights that people are having at that location, from people taking the illegal left turn to get across the light, to go across the parkway and go down in the other direction. And it's causing a great deal of road rage. And as I said, I've heard stories about many fights at that location. I think the answer would be the same thing that's out here at the Broadway, Farmer-Broadway National Bank site, that barrier, removable barrier, that stops people from taking the left turn. So I went there with DPW, when we looked at it, and unfortunately, because it's a two-way street, they really can't put the barrier there. And that would solve the problem that has been going on for a while. So I'm asking that the Traffic and Parking Commission consider making it a one-way street from Revere Beach Parkway up to Garfield Avenue. I will attend that Traffic and Parking Commission meeting and ask that they hold a public hearing before making it a one-way.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
Thank you.
And the last order?
Last order introduced by Counsel Bishop, order that a subcommittee on conference be held with the city manager to discuss available free cash.
Counsel Bishop?
Suspension, Madam President.
Adopted, unanimous against the suspension. See no objections. Would you like to speak on it?
Yes. I won't say that the city council fought to have money put in the stabilization funds for the city and the school, because we didn't have to fight. The city manager was in agreement that we should put money in. And at last year, the city council voted and they put a considerable amount of money in the city stabilization fund, I think it was to the tune of twenty million dollars and five million dollars into the school stabilization fund. Unfortunately, the city manager is now looking to use that money out of the school stabilization fund for capital improvement programs. And this is not a capital improvement account. This is the school stabilization fund, and he wants to use it to fix the roof at various schools, which I understand has to be done. But the stabilization fund is there in case the roof falls in. Then you have the cash in an emergency to do what has to be done. Repairs, capital improvements, and ongoing repairs should not be coming out of the stabilization fund. They should be coming from elsewhere. We have a considerable amount of free cash, and I feel strongly that rather than use the school stabilization fund, we should look into and discuss using some of that free cash to pay for these capital improvements at the schools. I think it would be money spent wisely, and it would also take the temptation away to do other things that aren't as important with the free cash. So I'm asking for a conference, and I hope that the chairman will schedule it ASAP.
Chairwoman, yes, she will.
Thank you.
I can't help but laugh that you told your wife you wouldn't be speaking a lot at this meeting. She must be very disappointed at home.
She must be.
Counselor Lopez?
President, I would like to suspend the rules for a minute.
Sure.
And I would like to present two awards to Mr. Paul Casino and also Lydia Coco for all the great work they have done with us, all the support they always give to us. I would like to present this to Mr. Casino.
Oh, thank you very much.
Counselor Bishop? Can I have permission to speak from the chair for the citations? See no objections? I just, Counselor Bishop? I just want to make sure that I, I just wanted to say something about Levia and Paul. They really, to have eleven people that you work for cannot be easy. Especially, you know, sometimes we get so caught up in being on opposing sides or the politics get, and they have to stay neutral all the time. And I can't imagine that that's an easy job, but they do it well and they do it with grace. And I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge them. So I just wanted to thank Counsel Lopez for coming up with the idea of getting the citations over to them. A lot of people don't know this, but Mr. Casino was once acting mayor for six months. This guy is like in a walking Chelsea encyclopedia. For those young people that don't know what encyclopedias are, it's Wikipedia in the form of a book. But I just want to thank Levia and Paul for the incredible work that they do in working and having eleven bosses. So just, thank you. Well, we're talking about Levia and Paul, if you want. No, okay, we're good? Public announcements? All right. Counsel Avellaneda? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. On Friday, May seventeenth, at noon in Chelsea Square, with the help of Post One-O-Nine, Francisco Toro of the Chelsea Veterans Director, Chelsea Police, Chelsea Fire, and so far, fifty people who say they're interested via Facebook, we plan on planting the flags again in Chelsea Square. This is initiative that was started a couple of years ago, and we'll be planting them in observance of Memorial Day. And what we've done is, because Memorial Day, just in June fourteenth is Flag Day, and then we have the Fourth of July, it tends to stand out there for the next few months. So if anyone's interested in participating in planting the flags to honor our veterans, our heroes, that will happen on Friday, May seventeenth, at noon. We have the, we'll have the flags, we'll have volunteers, we'll have the tools just to insert them to the ground. I think that it's become very iconic to, for a lot of people to be able to take those pictures with the police station in the background. It's a great picture and a great view, and I know the residents appreciate it. Second, I would be remiss if I don't say ahead of time, Happy Mother's Day to my mom, who's probably watching, and to all moms that's coming up on this Sunday. So again, Happy Mother's Day to all.
Counsel Recupero?
Happy Mother's Day to everybody, even to the ones that ain't mothers yet that are going to be mothers later. Here's, my public announcement is this, anybody that's a senior citizen that wishes to take taxes off his real estate that lives in his own home and can come to City Hall, go to HR, Human Resources, and apply, there's no more how much money you earn. It doesn't matter how much money you earn, you just have to be the age. To toda la gente que vive en la ciudad de Chelsea, que son dueños de casas, que tiene sesenta años o arriba, que quieren dar, coger taxes menos de su casa, eso hace que trabajar ciento horas un año. Excuse me, Mr. Tom, how many hours is that, a hundred or a hundred and, many hours do they have to work? Hundred twenty-five?
Keep going.
Okay, just a part of, make it a hundred a little more, whatever it is, but you can come and work, and it doesn't have to, you don't have no income limits anymore. That's for anybody that wishes to do so. Eso toda la gente que quiero hacerlo, ahora no importa cuánto tu dinero, coge, tú quieres bien arriba, o en City Hall le pregunte a ellos que tú quieras trabajar, ciento horas, o ciento veinticinco horas, eso es un año, la ciudad te quita. How much is that, one thousand five hundred or one thousand eight hundred?
Okay, Counsel Recupero, can we wrap up this announcement?
Oh, it's mil quinientos pesos, one thousand five hundred dollars I take off. So go and apply. Thank you.
Counsel Lopez?
Announcement, last week had the honor to go the intergenerational literacy program.